Super. Sheets are posted on Facebook, selling gas. Now through Labor Day from three forty-nine.
River.
Twitchy claim.
Or if it was in Ohio, it got more years.
Well, where would the heck it was?
Leading this direction.
Hello.
We need more.
Yeah.
We're essentially just together.
This was a man.
The problem was that most of the people who visit this table are mature.
Hi Larry.
Ben, Ben just got here.
Hi Larry. Drop your glasses. On the other side.
Oh, my glasses. Thank you. Although, you know, I see a lot of cars in the block. I would help.
You keep a sparkly silvery one in the car.
I do what I mean. It's for traffic stops. You don't have one?
I can honestly say. But I feel like Daryl should be proud of me for knowing the exact.
Right-handed.
That one. I don't think so.
Well, we close the month. Maybe Friday. Is only this Friday the first. If not, it'll be this week. Well, I'll put it on there with my finance page. There's a monthly report. It'll be attached to the June.
I cannot give.
Want to open that? Oh, well, that's all. The treasure statement goes back at the end of the fiscal year.
Oh, that's right.
I'm sorry. It's only at the end of the year. So quarterly, I'll put it out with my monthly report.
I was looking for it, but I was gonna call you, but I didn't know.
I knew by what they proposed.
Amazing.
Come to wipe that thing?
We've got.
Wipe that.
A good way. Maybe it's just right.
But they're not necessarily living in front of the city. Just.
Two and five sixteen. Over the frame when I started.
Any high adventure trips today or this summer?
Yeah, there was the Hawkeye Hills one.
Yeah, we went to Hawkeye.
Last week.
Yes. How was that?
I wasn't able to go home to a forestry camp.
Okay.
It was hot.
Yes. Well, how was forestry camp? Where'd you go for that one?
Um, Camp Canopy, which is Camp Muskingham.
Sure.
That's pretty good.
Is that on Leesville? Is Muskingham on Leesville?
What? I don't.
Muskingham's by Leesville. No CBs this year? No Philmont?
No.
Okay. No, uh, no kindling up north?
Yeah, it sounds fun.
Sounds like fun. All right, very good. When's summer camp this year?
Um, I think the seventeen.
Seventeen, good.
Sound like you done this.
Just a little bit. Just a little bit. I see a fifth year.
Thank you.
Two fifth year?
Fourth year.
Fourth year, okay. Four for your fifth. Very good.
Of course, that's exactly, yes.
I'm sure you'll make it. Okay.
Any of that is helpful. It's appreciated.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
My identifies.
I did. I had an inkling Patrick had.
It's right here?
Fantastic.
What a great night this is.
Hi Larry Tripp, how are you? Yeah.
There's different colors between you and what you can ask. I'm not doing.
Where'd you tell you were? Where does she think you are? If it wasn't me calling her, calling me. I wouldn't like this.
So your talents to get away from now? This one's like amazing. I had the app asked me to name them, so. I hired a first-generation Scot, so I'd say it was maybe.
Jamie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah.
We have one council member that is still having the effects of COVID. So we still have an opportunity for a council member to call in up until July first. And the rules revert. The word refers back to in person.
Oh, that's weird.
We have a few clear boxes. No, no.
Make a room. I was gonna say. I haven't heard too much about it.
Anything with the word box, that's some fun.
Should we refer to you as Mr. Press?
Mr. Press.
You chose to say okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, gentlemen, what bank are you?
Life.
Life. How many badges do you have?
Um, sorry. We're now six. Oh, yeah. Yep, sorry.
Yeah, sometimes.
Yep.
Zooming the gold posts on you.
Get into summer camp or? I was gonna say.
We haven't gone yet. Last year was all right. Probably COVID stuff, but it wasn't. Yeah, they're requiring masks.
They're around bicycles.
Yeah.
I think, I think they've been, they had a bicycle trail and then over COVID, I noticed one year. Nothing happened. It all threw out. Can't really drive or ride through it anymore. So I think they might have cleared it.
Yeah. It's always a good time. So, how many years do you have? Finishing these badges. If you can't tell, I raised an evil stump. I know the questions to answer, but I'm asking.
Six, seven months.
Do you have a plan for this? Do you know what a timeline?
They're here tonight.
Put your badges on a timeline. And that way you, that way you keep up and get through it. Okay, you get one shot at getting a figure. And I can tell you, it'll open the door for your interviews. What you do after that is based upon how well you paid attention to your communication merit badge. But it'll usually get you a first interview.
What Chief Kemp says is that I do hiring. Eagle Scout stand out on resume. That's somebody dedicated to through a process to get things achieved, and that's what you're looking for. Somebody who hands down a special destination. Absolutely.
I have a vetting selection.
Timeline. Really does work. Listen to this. I would grill in conversation, how old is he? Make a plan. To it, you don't. Everything else will just kind of start to count on.
First, that whole circle button, man? We have a.
Yep.
I now call order. It can be a whole meeting for June twenty-seventh to twenty-twenty-two. The time is seven PM. Ben, would you please call the roll?
Number four?
Here.
Number Mathie?
Here.
Number who?
Here.
Number Troy?
Here.
Number McLeister?
Here.
Number Wired?
Here.
Uh, number Wired is absent, six present.
Motion to excuse member Wired.
So moved?
Second, on favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay, moving on. Uh, Daryl? You're up first.
We have a request from the administration to tighten our data language for weeds. If you will open your packets and have them. Ben has taken, um, chapter seventeen thirty-nine. He has marked it. And before I kick it over to the administration. The basic purpose of the administration's request is to expedite the manner in which we bring property owners with weeds and grass into more rapid compliance. Right now, there's an extensive notification process and you give them literally many weeks to address an issue. I'm gonna take that down before you. It's just that. And this goes hand in hand with the code enforcement and building maintenance efforts that are not currently underway. Patrick, I don't want to steal too much of your thunder, but that's the essence of it.
Uh, yes, Chairman, if I may. So in, in, uh, dealing this now with a couple of years, I first want to thank the council. You know, for allowing us to, you know, enter into an agreement for legal services that are proving to be quite advantageous to the city. And this is just to have another example. So in the past, we just couldn't seem to find a way to cut through all the regulatory, um, legal, uh, notification issues in a timely manner. And it put us in a position where roughly it would, if somebody didn't really want to abate or mow their grass, uh, it would probably be somewhere in the order of four to five weeks before we would be able to effectively go in and cut it ourselves. We do publish a notice in the newspaper every April first, but it was all the other steps that were necessary along the way. And it just, I think, was a matter of just not thinking outside the box there. Having people that really understand the law clearly. And that's just completely, it's just unacceptable. It just is unacceptable. There's just so many properties I spend working, uh, now driving the city, uh, doing some data collection on various issues that we are trying to think outside the box on. And this is one of them. There's just, there's so many properties that are just not being maintained at all. For, as far as being grass goes. So this process is going to shorten it to, in essence, when we go, we're gonna knock on the door, talk to a person living there, find out if they're a owner or a tenant of the property. So we know we get to the right person. Give them a notice that, hey, we're coming back in forty-eight hours to see if this has been taken care of. If it's not been taken care of, then we're gonna give a notice, you know, the legal notice at that time that you have forty-eight hours to comply or we're cutting it, having it cut. And you'll be sending an invoice for that cut. That'll be done by a, a contract service. Uh, and if you don't, you know, pay it, then ultimately it's gonna end up on your, uh, county tax bill where it will eventually be paid. So that part's the same as what we've always done. It's just it's taken, before it's taken too long to get there. It used to take even longer than that, but we, you know, several weeks is just isn't cutting out, so no pun intended. Sorry, I just thought of that. So that's just a little bit of tweak. It's a forty-eight hour notice that we'll be back in forty-eight to see if it's been done. And then, uh, after that, we'll be back to have it cut, scheduled. Now, right now, you know, because it takes so long, you know, our nuisance officers are driving the same properties, you know, on a, almost like on an every other day basis. It's a lot of extra trips and wasted time to see if somebody's complied, when did they comply, and that kind of thing.
John, questions? Not at this time? Dave?
We're in Ohio. And it rains in the spring. Is, is three days, four days?
It's in essence, yeah, four days, I think. I mean, by the time they're getting the notice, their grass is already eight inches tall.
Right.
So it already hasn't been cut for a week or two, by the time it gets our notice. So uh, I don't really feel a lot of need to give them more than that. I think that's more the generous.
That would be my only concern is getting it. I own rental property and if the, if the contractor's supposed to cut the grass, bales, goes out of business, it might take more than two or three days to find a replacement. But a house? Springtime? I don't know. That's my only concern.
Well, I think what, what we end up doing is, John, is Dave, is just keep carving exceptions into it.
I don't want to carve exceptions.
And, and it's, you know, like, like my contractors unavailable. We hear that one a lot. If I don't even have a contract, my lawnmower won't start. It's just one thing after another. I mean, it's just, there was a responsibility of a homeowner. You just have to take care of your property. There are people in this community that take care of their property, and it's really a disservice to them that we're, we're allowing this to, to go on.
So we're, we're four days and the city will cut it?
Pardon me?
Four days, the city will cut it?
Four days and the city will authorize a contractor to commit a cutting.
If the contractor's authorized, but then promptly gets cut, do we, city still pay the contractor?
City's still gonna bill them, bill the homeowner for the service. If the contractor's billing us, we're billing them. These contractors that we have to have an arrangement with or saying that we need to have city services first. I gotta put my private clients to the side.
Right.
Because, you know, we're, we're asking it to be done, like, okay, we don't want you in a week or two weeks. We want you now, today.
Right. Okay, whether they provide the service or not, I understand. Okay. Whether they provide the service or not, I understand.
Mr. Schreier?
I'm good.
Mr. McLeister?
No, sir, no problems.
Mrs. Warren?
Same, same.
Very good. All right. Uh, if you look at the ordinance is drafted of, it is absent one provision. That is an emergency clause. Uh, if we were to give this three readings, go into thirty days effective after that signature, after the mayor's signature, we'll be, we'll probably be into September. So what I'm gonna propose we do is that, uh, honest for vote, to move this to, uh, committee for, to the regular council meeting for next Monday night with an emergency clause.
Next Monday would be July eleventh.
Or, excuse me.
Next meeting is?
The next meeting is July eleventh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can our contractor do that? Can our contractor be available that soon?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So, um, I'll learn, I'll make a motion that we, uh, move this to the agenda at our next council meeting on July eleventh. There's a motion.
Story seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Done.
Motion carries. All right, David, you're up next.
Okay, so the administration has... The administration has negotiated with the, um, water treatment plant employees, and they have come to an agreement on... Bear with me, wrong page. So with the Utility Workers Union of America, Local 605, and that's the water kind of label. There's six individuals there. Um, one of the great things about this is they started the negotiations somewhat early, but, um, the process went very well. And it went well because of communication and relationship the administration has with the employees there. As with other groups, they negotiated the benefit of vacation time on a bi-weekly basis instead of annual, so it accrues as they work throughout the year. The vacation time payout for those hours accrued over two weeks will be paid out on a quarterly basis. The, um, also negotiated for these employees a uniform allowance, which in their area of work is very important. And I think that is a three hundred dollars a year uniform allowance. And then there's also the, um, the wage increase, which is always part of the negotiation. And they negotiated a three percent wage increase over the next three years, which is consistent with other groups that we've got. The neat thing about their increase here, and I, I kudos to administration for realizing the value of certificates and additional education, but those that carry a full chemistry or microbiology lab certification, certification will also be eligible for a pay increase as long as those are current and valid. The last thing that I want to bring up is the, um, the Labor Management Committee that they participate in. And this is part of the communication side that builds that trust in the relationship between management and the employees. And I think that this is gonna be a valuable asset to continuing that, that relationship and keeping it strong. Mr. DiOrio, Ms. Albeck, anything else you would like to add? Ms. Carina?
All set.
Any questions from council?
Hearing none, I will make a motion that we move this to our next council meeting.
The vote will second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I, I responded aye.
Okay, thank you. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, motion to adjourn, committee all in.
The vote moves?
Second.
Warren, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Motion carries, turn. Now called a order, the council, the city council meeting for June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. The time is seven thirteen PM. Opening prayer, Daryl?
Please rise from prayer and remain silent until approach of the leaders. Almighty God, Creator of heaven and earth, we offer simple thanks this evening for the glories of summer, the beauty of which has mesmerized poets since the beginning of time. And we also pray this evening for the family and soul of David Kinkerman, longtime director of WAI and community leader. We are grateful for his service as we are for the summer. May he rest in peace.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a heart and a mind just as one.
And just as God.
Ben, would you please call the roll?
Number Schreier.
Here.
Number Holt.
Here.
Number Matheny.
Here.
Number Holt.
Here.
Number Warren.
Here.
Number McLeister.
Here.
And number Warren is absent, six present.
Motion to choose, number Warren?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We previously tabled the May sixteenth minutes. Um, can I have a motion in a second to take from the table the minutes from May sixteenth, on the twenty-twenty-two?
The vote will second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion in a second to approve minutes as presented from May sixteenth, June sixth, and June thirteenth of twenty-twenty-two?
The vote will?
So moved.
The vote will second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we will begin a recognition of public. Each individual will have, be granted five minutes to speak. The time of the rules will be displayed on the screen. When it's your turn to speak, please come to the podium and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
Larry Tripp, one-one-two-seven East Maple, North Canton, Ohio. Last week, I told a story about the body group, anybody, everybody, nobody, and somebody. Later that evening, I asked myself, where do I fit in that group as a citizen of North Canton? Didn't take me too long to believe I'm a nobody, like anybody who brings a message seeking good government in North Canton for everybody, but only oft, only often to hear the wrath of those on city council who think they are a somebody. Three weeks ago, June sixth, agenda cover page prepared by Council Clerk Young read as follows, President Stroya is requesting a discussion of the rules of city council and potential changes in response and comments made to him by several members. My first question would, would be who and what were, who and what were those comments made by other members of council? Councilman Stroya, the same members who project themselves as somebody, along with an occasional remarks by the fourth ward councilman, once again, that evening, completely stowed your thunder. Once again, the conversation drifted towards the speakers standing behind this podium as the fall guys for not following the rules and causing disorderly conduct within the, these council walls. We don't care if the city of Ca- Canton has a three-minute limitation for public speaks. This is North Canton, and we have five minutes. To hear a public speaker being unprepared is just like the criticism directed to a young woman retailer who many, when many evenings, your very own council members come unprepared, just as you and other associates were on June the sixth. Council president merely lead your meetings by following rule thirty-eight, which reads as follows, there shall be no debate between the speaker and members of the public audience, city employees, or s- council members. Also, rule thirty-nine is follows, members of the public audience, city employees, and council members shall not interrupt or otherwise engage the speaker during his five minutes of speech. Only after the speaker has completed speaking may a council member or city employee seated at the dais request permission from the president of council to respond to the speaker's comments. Enforce these rules that you, that you and city council members, not the public, not other city members, have created. This would go a long way in eliminating the travesty you folks sitting before me created last Tuesday night. This was probably one of the worst meetings I've seen while coming to council meetings. Only your meeting needlessly triggered more, some unusual aftermath. So let me just read a little poem. Many citizens have had their say from a council of thank you, but we will do it our way. Then one, not, then not one, not two, not three, but four professional speakers spoke on council floor, comments with character, but only too short, some with implications. We may see you in court. The city, in this case, with nothing to say, implies, once again, we will do it our way. Uh, by the way, you see, I didn't major in, uh, poetry in college. Thanks.
Almost one and two to address council.
Tuck Osborn, three-oh-seven Fairview Street Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. My comments are in regards to the proposed charter amendment to establish four-year terms of office for North Canton elected officials. In evaluating the proposed charter amendments, each and every member of council should be able to explain the reasons for any changes and the benefits of those changes for citizens. I have heard no logical reason supporting many of the proposed changes to the city's charter. I can understand that office holders want longer terms. It benefits them and them alone. But do longer terms benefit city residents? I think not. Currently, the city's charter specifies a two-year residency requirement before a citizen can run for elective office. Given that requirement, under our current two-year terms of office, new city residents could find themselves having to live in the city for four years before they could run for elective office. To illustrate that fact, let me explain in the present. For a new resident who may have moved into North Canton in January of this year, twenty-twenty-two, they would not be eligible to run for office in the twenty-twenty-three election cycle as they would have only lived in the city for one year and ten months. Currently, that citizen would have to wait until November of twenty-twenty-five, nearly four years after having moved into the city before being able to run for office. Had this council recently been elected to four-year terms of office in twenty-twenty-one, a new resident could find themselves having to live in the city for as long as six years before they can run for office. How is this change beneficial for citizens of North Canton? Some years ago, well-known city resident and businessman Terry Horner had his candidacy to run for a two-year seat on North Canton City Council denied because of the charter's two-year residency requirement. Even though Mr. Horner remained a resident of North Canton for many more years, he lost interest after that experience and never chose to run for a seat on city council ever again. How many other citizens are going to lose interest in running for a seat on council when they realize they may very well have to wait as long as six years? In the course of an election campaign, a candidate learns about the community. Residents get to know the candidates and participate in what we all treasure as the democratic process of our government. Four years is a long time. I would foresee office holders resigning during such long terms. This would result in remaining members of council filling the vacant council seats and thus leaving citizens out of the choosing their representatives. That council-appointed replacement would then run as an incumbent, thereby edging out any citizen who had waited nearly six years to run for office. This proposed amendment serves only you elected officials. It does not serve citizens. I urge you to vote no on ordinance number forty-seven, twenty-twenty-two. I will also add that your Ohio state representatives serve two-year terms. Your Ohio congressman in Washington serves two-year terms. Do you think you're better than they are? Lastly, I see again, my city councilman has chose, or councilperson, excuse me, has chosen to appear virtually yet again. Thankfully, this is the last opportunity to not show up for a council meeting. And once again, Mrs. Warren, I ask, where are you at this moment? Why can't you show up? You're gonna be taking off for a, uh, six-week vacation here just in a matter of weeks. And yet you've been gone for several weeks, just in the last couple of weeks. This is not right. And for each of you to sit here and condone this, week after week after week. Imagine if we did go to a four-year term. You would have to live with a fellow councilperson who had this kind of lack of dedication to their council seat. Is that what you want to put up with? And nobody wants to stand up and say, this is not right. We know Mrs. Warren is abusing this, this loophole that was created for the height of the COVID epidemic. Are you even here in the state, Mrs. Warren? This is not right. And I think enough, each of you have enough integrity that you wouldn't abuse the privilege. And it ends, as someone said earlier, January, or July first. Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to address council? Moving on to old business, uh, can I have a motion in a second to read by title only? Ordinance forty-five dash twenty-two.
The vote moves? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 An ordinance amending ordinance fifty-five dash twenty-two, establishing a designated outdoor refueling area in the city of North Canton in order to expand the hours of operation and area thereof.
Well, this is the third reading. Um, I don't have anything to add. Um, we're gonna be on Monday and Tuesday.
This is Daryl's.
That's okay, John, you're doing a fine job. This came from, John, this came from you. That was a great summary, and I would only add that not only do we add additional days, but we also, uh, expanded them back pursuant to a request from, uh, one of the, uh, community organizations and one of the businesses. And, uh, if there are no other questions or comments, uh, I'll make a motion that we adopt the third reading of ordinance forty-five dash twenty-two. As John has recommended.
I'll second. Daryl?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on, um, okay, so we have the charter ordinances coming up here. I'm gonna read a note, um, I wish I would have printed it larger, so I'm gonna have to go into it. Due to the provisions of the Ohio Constitution regarding the passage of the charter amendments, we do not want to pass any of the charter amendments until July eleventh. Otherwise, we'll have to call a special meeting, which is very costly.
Election.
Special, special election, sorry, which is very costly. Can I have a motion and a second to postpone ordinances forty-seven dash twenty twenty-two, forty-eight dash twenty twenty-two, forty-nine dash twenty twenty-two, fifty dash twenty twenty-two, fifty-one dash twenty twenty-two, and fifty-two dash twenty twenty-two until July eleventh, twenty twenty-two?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Mr. President, may I say something?
Yes.
Last time, two weeks ago now, uh, Ms. Platt's here and she asked us about putting the whole language on the ballot, the old language and the new language. Um, I just wanted to let everyone know for the record, we did get confirmation from the Board of Elections that they will let us do that. They will.
All right, so moving on to, can I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance fifty-three dash twenty twenty-two? I'll make the motions.
Revolt will second?
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries?
An ordinance amending chapter one fifty-five Personnel Regulations of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, specifically section one five five point zero nine Leave of Absence Provisions subsection C Vacation Regulations, to amend the vacation accrual rate for full-time exempt personnel.
David?
So this is our third reading and this is for those that are not represented by a bargaining group, but it takes on the same appearance of vacation hours that are accrued biweekly and the same type of payout, bringing that into being consistent. Any questions? Motion?
Revolt will move?
I'll second.
Warran, second.
Please state exactly what you're doing.
Motion, the adoption of ordinance fifty-three dash twenty-two.
Story of seconds. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to new business. Can I have a motion and a second to suspend Council Rule twenty-four to allow for considerations of the water treatment collective bargaining agreement without a committee report?
Revolt will move.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, this item will be referred to as Resolution fifty-five dash twenty twenty-two. Can I have a motion and a second to read by title only, Resolution fifty-five dash twenty twenty-two? So moved?
Revolt seconds?
All in favor? Aye.
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 Closed? Motion carries? Ben?
A resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement between the city of North Canton and the Utility Workers Union of America Local Six Oh Five, the Water Treatment Plan, as negotiated by the Department of Administration and declaring the same to be an emergency.
So this just came out of committee. We discussed the terms of the, the agreement. The reason we need to put it on emergency is that these pay increases take effect July first. So we need to get that handled today to make sure that everything's in place for our employees' water treatment. Anything to be added? Questions?
I would only congratulate the administration and its negotiating team for wrapping this up in a collegial manner and timely fashion.
Thank you. I thank the council for their support, but also for those that aren't here to give it, to make time in their day, to be here virtually so that this could be passed on an emergency so that we can give it an effect for those employees.
Okay, can I have a motion and a second to adopt the first reading of Resolution fifty-five dash twenty twenty-two?
Revolt will move?
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings? So moved?
Revolt will second?
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, can I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution fifty-five dash twenty twenty-two under the suspension of the rules?
Revolt will move?
With the equal second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to department reports. Catherine?
I have no report.
Gina?
No report.
Patrick?
No report.
Mayor?
Well, the pickleball courts are, have been dedicated. That's important. And we had a, it was last Friday and it was well received and, uh, I think it'll be another outdoor activity that people want to come and enjoy. That was successful. I know we're gearing up for the Fourth of July and I caution everyone who will be purchasing fireworks to practice safety as the law comes into effect on July first. And, uh, if, if there's anything that we can all request from police or fire is if you're gonna have home firework displays, it's gotta be in a safe manner and keep your neighbor in, in mind. And that, uh, we're gonna wait and see how this transpire, uh, transpires in our community. But I just really want to caution people to be careful with the fireworks. And the Fourth of July fireworks that the JCs have is a great venue to go to. It's free and if you really want to, you can see a big display, I would say go there. And there's other places in and around the county that you can take in fireworks. And just, you know, watch out for each other, our little ones, and just be careful to, uh, the message is strictly safety when, when, for your displays. That's probably one of my major, most concerns at this, at this time. Don't have anything else really to share other than the holidays coming up. Just be safe, enjoy it, and, uh, again, thank you for getting the collective bargaining agreement settled so that we can go forward with that. And that's about it right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ben?
Um, yes, tomorrow is our police sergeant's promotional exam. Um, I'm gonna take the liberty of saying, if they're willing, applicants are excited for tomorrow. Um, hopefully they all do well and hopefully they're all studying at home right now. Um, and then, secondly, I've been giving you all periodic updates on my office's efforts to build a database of legislation amendments. Uh, we have finally broken through to the twenty-first century, so we are getting to the end, um, only to start phase two of Crossroads. But that's all.
Wait. No report? No report? Okay. Moving on to council reports, uh, let's start the job.
Well, Friday night was a big night, uh, for the pickleball. Those of you who haven't been over there, they're nice courts. We've done wonders at that facility. Hats off to the administration for what we're doing over there and what we'll continue to do over there. Yeah, or Arrowhead, excuse me, a long day today. Uh, but i- i- it's such a beautiful facility over there, from the golf carts to the changes we made at the pool. It's really, uh, the crown jewel of the fourth ward, I like to call it. Again, thank the administration.
David? I had mentioned it briefly before, talking about the, uh, the negotiations that took place. Daryl said it very nicely, too. But there's a lot that goes into that and negotiations can get adversarial and they can go long time and they can go legal and they can get really ugly at times. And that's when there's no relationship between personnel and administration. And what we have now is working and it's because of the dedication of, of the team and getting that out there. It's the consistent communication that takes place. It's the fact that they have built trust between administration and the employees and they know that it's gonna be honest and fair. I, I mentioned the, the Labor Management Committee. There's three members of management and three members of union that are in there and they're granted time off from work to be part of this group that's communicating on things that are of importance to them. So I, I commend you on the work and thank you for that and ask you to please keep that communication line open and keep that trust there. It's very important to the city and to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Daryl?
Thank you, Mr. Story. I'd like to answer Mr. Osborne's questions tonight about explaining the rationale for term limits. I think it's important to understand that, uh, let me just take a step, that Mr., Mr. Osborne asserts, I'm gonna quote him, that it does not serve our citizens. Fact of the matter is that most of government operates on four-year terms or longer. If you're a United States Senator, it's six years. If you serve in the Ohio Senate, it's four. If you're a county office holder, it's four. And every trustee in the state of Ohio serves not two, but four years. A while back, uh, Mr. Young and I took a look at, as you all remember, raising salaries for council. I commissioned him to see if we could gather some, gather some, uh, data around those, those salary raises for council. And the study was not conclusive and I would just be, it was good. But the, the idea was, how do we make our elections more competitive here in North Canton? We heard that from citizens, many of whom stood right here at the microphone. I want competitive elections. Okay? What's it gonna take? Well, first of all, we thought there was a salary issue, so we looked at that and Ben did a nice job mapping it out and showed we were probably still at the nineteen eighty-two level and probably oughta bump it up a little bit. Okay? Don't go to the high, don't go to the low, but get it above eighty-two. But the other thing that we discovered, as we looked this, although not completely conclusive, was that longer terms may produce more candidates. We had a fair number of competitive races this last time, they, I would argue, perhaps based upon slightly higher salaries. There are practical reasons why you want, you may want to consider four years. The first is, and this has been my experience, councils are effective on a two-year cycle for about eighteen months. They get into the summer election and then they go into campaign mode and everything kind of slowly grinds down because their focus is elsewhere. Even happens to mayors, I might add. Today, we deal with big issues. Big issues that may take more than just eighteen months to get your arms around and see it completed. Would you rather have eighteen months with a slowdown or would you rather go with something less than, than four years? And I would argue it probably makes more sense for the newbies, the new members of council. I'd much rather have that person working along and gather the information over a four-year term rather than a two. So I think you can make a decent argument. I understand the argument for two years. But I think this interest in the citizens may in fact be better served by four because they have more, council members have more time to work on the issues. If it's a working council. If it is a working council or has a working mayor administrator. But that's, that would be the rationale that I would lay out. I didn't participate in discussions. I voted for this, I support it. But it just seems to be a better place to be if you're looking for your city's long-term future. So, the only other thing I would add was, uh, Friday night, I was also at the pickleball courts and Mrs. Revolt expressed great regret that she did not have an opportunity to take money from the mayor. She was ready, she had a, a pocketful of ones and she was ready to go. But he, he ducked out and wisely had my hand. She's gotta kill it back tonight.
No comment.
That's my rule.
Smart. Uh, Stephanie?
No report?
Jamie?
Yeah, thank you. Um, hey, I just wanted to say that, um, this whole COVID experience, the most frustrating part has been not being able to go and see those, uh, great pickleball courts, uh, being dedicated. Um, I think that was one of the things that rung true is my, um, notification popped up on my phone on Friday. I realized, darn, I was gonna miss that because I had been so looking forward to that. But they look great and, uh, many thanks to all who were involved. Um, I think I would have certainly enjoyed seeing, um, Mrs. Revolt take on the mayor, so maybe next time. Um, also just wanna again thank you all, again, I guess not your doing, but thank you for the opportunity to join you here virtually as I, uh, actually, my wife and I both deal with the aftereffects of, uh, having COVID-nineteen. Um, the only other thing I would like to add is, is that, uh, we have a holiday weekend before us and just to support those, uh, local organizations that do so much in our community, namely, um, the North Canton YMCA with their July fourth race, as well as the North Canton JCs with the July fourth parade, as well as the fireworks. Um, other than that, I have nothing else to share.
Go.
I'd like to, I'd like to make one more comment. I'd actually like to, to link up something that John said and in a comment that Dave made. And this goes back to pickleball. I think many times we don't realize the amount of, of lift that goes into pulling off projects. Dave cited the collective bargaining agreement that was really the result of a huge effort in relationship building by the administrative team, Director of Finance and our Deputy Director of Administration, working with our employees. But the other example of real hard work and attention to detail is actually at Arrowhead. The course is in terrific shape. The grounds are wonderful. People are happy to be there and it's a directed attribute to the administration's hard work to clean that facility up. And as John indicated, the showcase of the fourth ward. It really is great. It was a wreck forty-eight months ago. It was a disaster. And the administration partnership with our contractor has turned this place around and it's terrific. So pickleball is really just the, is the tip of the iceberg of all the hard work that's, that's gone into making that facility what it is right now. And I might add some.
It's black.
It's either black.
All right, um, I just wanted to say, sharing my thoughts and prayers, uh, to Christina as she continues her, her recovery. Then, I'm very much looking forward to July fourth. I usually go on vacation, so I'm excited to be in town for this fireworks. And then, what time does the parade start? It starts at?
Ten thirty to twelve.
Ten thirty to twelve?
On the fourth, right.
All right.
And they always assemble up at, uh, Seventh and Street and, and Dogwood and, uh...
Awesome. I think it's been three years since I've been in town for that, so very excited to, to see that. And the last thing, I, I need two more things. So what a difference in the administration and how you work together to finish collective bargain, bargaining and how it used to be. I mean, night and day, that's, that's, I can't say enough good things about that. So congratulations. And then, wine's for local, that's all I've got to say. Uh, moving on to the calendar.
Moving on to the calendar coming up. July Fourth is gonna be Independence Day, obviously. We're not gonna have a meeting then. Followed up our last meeting before the summer recess on July eleventh. Any other questions, comments?
Motion to adjourn?
Will we adjourn from recess from August?
Hold on.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Motion to adjourn. Revolt will move. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Adjourn.